Good evening, I'd like to call the regular Stanley County Board of Commissioners meeting to order on February the seventeenth, two thousand and fourteen. Like to welcome everyone here, especially our media. And at this time, I'd like for us to try to remember Commissioner McIntyre, he had an accident and broke himself up a little bit, he's doing about as well as be expected, they said, and Josh went and visited him and he said he had to have his hip worked on or replaced, so he's broke up, broke his pelvic bone, so he's gonna be out awhile, and just be thanking him tonight, and you thought some prayers. And at this time, let's bow our heads, just have a moment of silence. Thank you. And at this time, let's pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is retirement award, well, I gotta get the agenda approved, we have some changes to it, too. Only one I have to mention, it's closed session. The closed session, we will not need tonight, that didn't, we didn't need to have that for any economic developments, not, didn't come about, so we marked that off. And if there's no other changes, I'll entertain a motion to accept the agenda as changed. Motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval, seconded by Commissioner Ashudo. All in favor say aye, motion carried. First item is the retirement award presentation for Gerald McSwain, Stanley County Soil and Water. Lindsey, would you read that for us tonight?
I appreciate Tony giving me the opportunity to read this and make this presentation. My son has the same job that Gerald has, except in a different county, and he speaks very highly of you Gerald, so that means I think a lot of you as well. Gerald McSwain, Gerald began working for Stanley County on November first nineteen ninety-four as a district conservation technician, where he remained until his retirement on January one, two thousand and fourteen, over nineteen years of service to the county. Gerald performed his duties in a professional manner, and always used common sense in dealing with the landowners of Stanley County, which is very much appreciated in Stanley County, I can tell you that. His knowledge of the job will be greatly missed. Gerald is married to one Eve McSwain, and has two daughters, Diane Oudy and Stacy Hicks. In his retirement, he plans to continue farming, and enjoy more time with his family. Gerald, we have a token of appreciation, a clock, and on the clock is inscribed, presented to Gerald McSwain for faithful and dedicated service to the citizens of Stanley County. On this occasion of your retirement, we extend our sincere appreciation for your service, and wish you even greater achievement and rewards in the future. Presented this seventeenth day of February, two thousand and fourteen, Stanley County Board of Commissioners. Congratulations on your retirement, and I know you will be missed, and you're very much appreciated for what you, what you do, and what you bring to Stanley County. Most people don't know that the tens of thousands, or hundreds of thousands of people who go to Stanley County, we really much appreciate it.
Gerald, I thank you for all you've done, and for enjoying retirement, I don't think the alarm works on that clock. Thanks for your service.
Thank you so much Gerald.
Next item on our agenda is the proclamation declaring Stanley County a Purple Heart County, and the presenter will be Mike Stubbs, commander of chapter six thirty-four.
Thank you sir. First of all, before I start the presentation, I'd like to give you a few items. We're proud to be here tonight, representing the military or the Purple Heart. Please let me introduce myself, I'm Mike Stubbs, commander of the Military of the Purple Heart Wounded Warriors, chapter six thirty-four. I served the United States Army of Vietnam. At this time, I'd like to ask all our MOPH members to please stand and come forward. Please go over here, and face the audience. I'd like to introduce these gentlemen, please. As I call your name, please raise your hand. Ronnie Balkum, United States Army Vietnam. Ron Wade, United States Army Vietnam. Steve Zenas, United States Arm, excuse me, Navy Vietnam, Brownwater. Mike Moore, United States Army Vietnam, and a little young whippersnapper on the end there with us, that's Tom Fairbrother, United States Navy, World War II. We represent all Purple Heart veterans, as well as all veterans who have served our country. Our chapter at this time has a hundred and forty-one members, from Gaston, Union, Mecklenburg, Cabarrus, Lincoln, Cleveland, Roan, and Stanley Counties. We're a very proud and unique group, we are the second smallest military organization, second only to the Congressional Medal of Honor Society, due to our uniqueness of being Purple Heart recipients. To be a member, you have to be a Purple Heart recipient. The Military of the Purple Heart is the only organization chartered by Congress for combat wounded veterans. The Order to Establish the First Purple Heart was issued by George Washington during the Revolutionary War, was initially created as the badge of military merit in seventeen eighty-two. The Purple Heart, an American decoration, is the oldest military decoration in the world in present use. The Purple Heart is specifically a combat decoration. The Purple Heart is awarded, in the name of the President, to members of the Armed Forces of the United States who have been wounded by an instrument of war in the hands of the enemy, and posthumously to the next of kin, in the name of those who are killed in action, or died wounds received in action. Today is in the past, the single bond that unites members of the Order, that each has sustained a wound inflicted by an enemy in combat. The members' common bond is that they have given their own blood for their country. The mission of the Military of the Purple Heart is to foster an environment of goodwill, and camaraderie among combat wounded veterans, promote patriotism, support necessary legislative initiatives, and most importantly, provide service to all veterans and their families. As a Purple Heart County, Stanley County will be honoring all Purple Heart recipients, and all military veterans. All military personnel have a job to do, whether it be a clerk, supplier, cook, truck driver, engineer, or good old infantry, all veterans and current military do what was or is asked of them, they do it well. The pride of veteran feels when they see this being displayed is a great feeling. If you've ever been anywhere else, other than the USA, you know what a great country this is. The veterans are a big reason we can live the way we do, in the greatest country on this earth, and we know Stanley County is a very patriotic county. We, the Military of the Purple Heart Wounded Warriors, chapter six thirty-four, consider it an honor, that Stanley County is considering bestowing this honor to all veterans. We know there are Purple Heart veterans in this region that are honored in our chapter. We hope that this proclamation by Stanley County, that other Purple Heart veterans will come forward and be recognized. We, the MOPH, we work with local high schools, we attend their junior ROTC award ceremonies, and present a MOPH Leadership Medal to an outstanding cadet. We meet with the students and talk about military issues and our military experiences. North Carolina recently became a Purple Heart state, only the third state in the nation. We recently worked with the Charlotte Motor Speedway, making it the first major sports speedway in the nation. Also, we made the Caramont Regional Medical Center, which most of you are aware of that, as being Gaston Memorial Hospital, which was the first, made it the first Purple Heart hospital in the nation. And that hospital was created at the end of World War II, for the veterans coming home, the injured veterans during World War II. And we also hit a little milestone, we feel like, we made the Carolina Panthers NFL team, the first major sports franchise in the nation to be a Purple Heart team. At this time, I'd like to ask if there's any other veterans in the audience, if they'd please stand. We'd like to thank you for your service. You can learn more about the Military of the Purple Heart at www.purpleheart.org, and our local chapter at www.moph634.org. Anyone have any questions?
Anyone have any questions? Thank you Commander, a very good presentation, and I'd like to read the proclamation now, if it'd be alright with you.
Yes sir.
In the honor of the mil, in honor of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, whereas the Purple Heart is the oldest military decoration still in present use, and was initially created by George Washington in seventeen eighty-two as a badge of military merit. And whereas the Purple Heart was the first American service award made available to the common soldier, and is awarded to many, to any member of the United States Armed Services wounded or killed in combat with the declared enemy of the United States, and whereas the mission of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chartered by the, an act of Congress, is to foster an environment of goodwill among the combat wounded veteran members and their families, to promote patriotism, to support related legislative initiatives, and most importantly, to make sure we have never forgotten the sacrifices made by those so decorated. And whereas, that there have been many former Stanley County residents who made the ultimate sacrifice in giving their lives in the cause of freedom, and the numerous combat wounded veterans who currently reside in Stanley County, and as a Purple Heart awardees, who contribute to their community in countless ways, and whereas Stanley County, North Carolina, falls within the preview, purview of the chapter six thirty-four of the Military Order of the Purple Heart, and wishes to pledge its strong support for the noble organization, and for those put their lives at risk in service of their country and their fellow citizens. Now therefore, it be proclaimed and resolved, that the Stanley County, North Carolina, by the affirmative, affirmative action of the declaration of this Board of County Commissioners, does hereby bestow honor and gratitude upon the Military Order of the Purple Heart, chapter six thirty-four, and proudly supports the recognition of the Stanley County as a Purple Heart County in the state of North Carolina, hopefully it will be adopted tonight, the seventeenth of, day of February, two thousand and fourteen. And I would also like to say Commander, this is just a small token, that we should be giving all of the veterans that served, wounded or not wounded, in, for our country, and we need to realize how important this has been to our great country we live in now, and I'm, I'm proud to be able to read this tonight.
Thank you sir.
What a pleasure to board.
I make a motion, we accept.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for approval, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. All in favor say aye? Motion carried. Thank you again Commander.
Mr. Chairman, also, we'd like to present something to the county, if we could. We, we take pride in what we do, and we, one thing we like to do, we make a county, a Purple Heart County. We like to give them a special plaque, recognizing them as a, as a county. I'd like to read this to you, the Military of the Purple Heart Special Recognition Award is bestowed with pride to Stanley County, North Carolina, for your dedication and support honoring America's combat wounded veterans, becoming the Purple Heart County, presented by the patriot members of chapter six thirty-four, Military of the Purple Heart, USA. Sir, I'd like to present this to you, please. We would also, we'd like to thank these gentlemen for being here tonight and support us. You're president of your Stanley County Veterans Council?
I've been, I've been, we really appreciate you guys for supporting us. Thank y'all all for being here tonight.
Next item on the agenda is a presentation for the funding request by representatives from the upper, did I miss one, proclamation during March and April, two thousand and fourteen, as a four-one-one-four counties, one book and one community, months in Stanley County, presented as Melanie Hollis, I was about to forget you Melanie.
Sorry I'm not as exciting as that group was. I do have a glow-in-the-dark book. If you remember, about fourteen months ago, we partnered with Cabarrus, Roan, Cabarrus, Roan, Union Counties for a big read. This year, we're partnering with Cabarrus, Roan, Davidson Counties for our big read. The title of the book is Mr. Penumber's Twenty-four Hour Bookstore, and it is cool, it glows in the dark, so warn your spouse if you've got it on your nightstand, or they'll wake up in the middle of the night, wondering what you got. Again, this year, we have a very nicely printed brochure, thanks to the Cabarrus County Library, that lists all of the programs being sponsored by all of the libraries that are participating, and people are invited to attend any of the programs at any of the libraries. You can pick up brochures, there are some here in the county office, and all of the libraries in all of the counties have copies of, of the brochure. One exciting thing, for the last time that we did this, all of the groups participating did win an award from North Carolina Public Library Directors Association, and we were part of that, and to help fund this year's program, the Cabarrus County Librarian wrote and received a state library grant, on behalf of all of the participating libraries, to help pay for it. So we have before you this evening, a proclamation, and I'm hoping that you will pass it for the county.
Would you like to read the proclamation to us?
I certainly can.
Alrighty.
Whereas, reading is a joy for all ages, which allows young and old to come together in discussion on a variety of topics, and whereas, every community has special traits that make it unique, these traits develop over time, and are woven into the fabric of its citizens' daily lives. In many ways, our community defines who we are, and whereas, every community comes together through shared history, shared knowledge, and shared experiences. As our community grows and changes, it become, it can become more difficult to maintain and to honor the traits that are unique and special. And whereas, the Stanley County Public Library and the Pfeiffer University Library have partnered with the public libraries, parks departments, community colleges, and others in Cabarrus, Davidson, and Roan Counties, to form one community, for the four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community project, and whereas, four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community, is one way to bring together each diverse individual in Cabarrus, Davidson, Roan, and Stanley Counties, to share an experience together, the experience of reading the same novel. This collective experience not only encourages literacy, it also encourages dialogue and the expression of thoughts and ideas among individuals who may not otherwise find a connection. And whereas, the months of March and April, two thousand and fourteen, have been selected for the four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community project, and whereas, Mr. Penumber's Twenty-four Hour Bookstore by Robin Sloan, is selected as this year's four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community project, and whereas, in the celebration of the four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community project, created many ways to come together and participate throughout March and April, by participating in book discussions, entering contests, participating in the quest for the code at the arena, by meeting Robin, author Robin Sloan, and many other events. Therefore, the Stanley County Board of Commissioners, hopefully will declare the months of March and April as four-one-one-four counties, one book, one community months, in Stanley County, and command its observance to all citizens.
Thank you Melanie, anyone have any questions? Seeing none, what a pleasure to board. Motion made by Commissioner Morton to adopt, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye? Motion carried, thank you Melanie.
Thank you gentlemen.
The next item on the agenda is the presentation and funding request by the representatives of the Upper PD Farm and Food Council, Sean Hatley and Nancy Bryant. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. My name is Sean Hatley, and I am a Stanley County representative, farm producer representative on the Upper PD Farm and Food Council, and with me tonight is Nancy Bryant, she is the interim director. And Nancy will pass out to you a, a new brochure, hot off the press, while I read some information for you. So the council is pleased to report to you again, that through various tools and programs of outreach, we are increasingly making Anson, Montgomery, and Stanley County citizens aware of the benefits of food grown locally by our farmers and other producers. You may remember that our vision is a sustainable, locally-based, economically resilient farm and food system. Not only is local food tastier and healthier for us, but it also supports local families, and helps build the sense of community, preserves open space, wildlife, and the environment, keeps taxes down, and is a terrific economic investment back into our counties. For every dollar spent on locally grown food products, that one dollar is multiplied seven times within the community, according to the North Carolina Department of Agriculture. It is an investment in the future of Stanley County. The other UPFFC representatives from Stanley, to the council, are listed in your packets. All of the other representatives are working hard in two thousand and fourteen, to create even more effective tools to spread the gospel of locally grown food. UPFSC's only staff to date has been an unpaid interim director position, which Nancy has graciously provided and filled, since the birth of the idea of the council in November two thousand and ten, until present. Nancy is retiring at the end of June, this year. And what that means is, the council has to find a replacement. So towards that end, we've created two ad hoc groups, one is a search committee, and the other is a funding committee. The role then is to fill Nancy's shoes with these committees. The funding team has drafted plans to fund this position, because as of today, it has not been funded. Your two thousand and twelve endorsement of, of Stanley County, as well as Anson and Montgomery Counties, states that you will encourage in-kind staff participation and resources when possible, and when available. And we're here tonight to say thank you very much. We have so appreciated the Stanley people and staff who have helped since you passed your resolution. People like Andy Lucas, Tyler Brummett, Dr. Brenda Case, and Robin Coats of Stanley Community College, Lori Ivy with extension, and her staff, Jeremy Hardy, and others. We want to thank you for all of your in-kind support and contributions to date. Tonight, we ask that you help us build a startup fund to hire this new part-time director, to assist us in taking the Upper PD Farm and Food Council through the next steps to champion our local farmers and producers of local food and food products. We are asking each county to contribute one thousand dollars to this fund. We hope we can count on your assistance towards achieving this goal. Are there any questions?
Anyone have any questions, Mr. Hatley? Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity.
We'll take this under advisement.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
No, I appreciate what y'all do, and I like the part where you said the food actually tastes better, because you know, I'm the one of those guys that never, never met a restaurant that I didn't like eating in, but this summer, I started, you know, with, we had the farmer's market here at the, the, in the commons, and I started going to that and cooking some of my own food, and I got used to that corn, and then after the season ended, I went and bought some corn at a local grocery store, and oh my gosh, that's the first time I really tasted the difference between locally grown and stuff you buy in the store, so I appreciate everything y'all do there.
And it's healthier for you too.
Oh yeah. Yeah, so I appreciate, I appreciate the, what y'all are doing.
Well, not only, not only does it taste good, too, we're aware of the ten percent effort that's been made throughout the state, and I don't think, I don't think many people are aware that if we just bought ten percent of our foods locally, it would be something like three point six billion dollars, kind, commitment, or, or addition to our economy in the state, so that's another thing. And I appreciate y'all coming tonight, because we have our retreat on, on Friday, and this will give us an opportunity to
Oh, good timing.
To have this as part of the discussion as we go to our retreat. Thank you so much.
And I don't know whether I'll be back to see you all, in this, in my position as
director, so I want to thank you for, truly for, not only what he said, for the support, but so many people in the county who've supported us, this effort for the, because after all, if we, truly, another, to add to your statistic, what he said, if we spend one dollar on local food, it's multiplied seven times within the county, and that just doesn't happen with the foodstuffs that come from fifteen hundred miles away, or at our regular grocery store. It's, so it's really building, I'm all about local economy, and this does it, this really helps. Thank you.
I appreciate you volunteering your time, Nancy, doing this, and last thing I was saying, our county seal, of course, of the three big items in our county seal agriculture's like the last one, the last one standing, so we want to
That's right, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is the board and committee appointments, presenter is Andy Lucas, county manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The first item for your consideration, you enclosed in your packet, is a letter from the town of Norwood, for the appointment of Ms. Gail Shields to the Norwood Planning and Zoning, representing the ETJ portions of Norwood. That request for reappointment is before you this evening. That request for reappointment is before you this evening.
I make a motion, we reappoint. Motion made by, uh, Commissioner Ashudo for reappointment, do I hear a second? Seconded by Commissioner Morton. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item in there.
Next one is for the Nursing Home Advisory Committee, uh, as you are aware, not, I think it was either last, last meeting or the meeting before, there were several reappointments. But Mister Rick Russell, uh, became ineligible due to a, um, a, a conflict of a, a family member. Um, I believe it was a family member, um, working for one of the, uh, nursing homes. As a result of that, there's a vacancy, and, uh, in the packet this evening is a, um, is an application from Mister John Bell, um, for your consideration.
What's the pleasure to board?
I make a motion, we appoint Mister Bell.
Motion made by Commissioner Ashudo for appointing Mister Bell, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Motion carried.
Just want to say real quick, I appreciate Mister Bell, he's been showing up at our meetings, and he goes to, I believe, the Alamo meetings, and he's been really trying actively getting involved in the community, and we wish we'd have more folks who really would take the time to get, get involved.
Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda, we've all got it before us, and I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Motion made by Commissioner Morton to approve, do I hear a second? Seconded by Vice Chairman Donovan, all in favor say aye. Motion carried. At this time, we're open for public comment, and we have one signed up, Jeff Bennett, would you come forward at this time? And he's gonna be talking, I think mainly to Lindsey about CTP, so.
Yes, thank you, Mister Commissioner, and board members. Appreciate what you do, and I appreciate you allowing me to, to come in here this evening to speak to you. Um, I live in Stanley County, just north of Red Cross, in a small community that neighbors the, uh, Hinson and Whitley Farms. In an area that is being considered by, under the Comprehensive Transportation Plan, there's a potential bypass road, to bypass Locust, the twenty-four, twenty-seven. I have some concerns, I met Mister Donovan at a meeting, uh, at Stanley County Community College, uh, a couple of months back, or a month or so back. And, um, you know, first I understand the importance of responsible municipal planning, and the need for connectivity and future requirements because of demand and road needs. But I also have a, um, sincere desire to represent the interests of my neighbors and the surrounding farms in Stanley County, so tonight I'm, I'm here to respectfully ask, in a request to have the opportunity to serve on any advisory committee capacity to the Rocky River, uh, Rural Planning Organization, and Mister Chairman, you said I should ask Mister Donovan after the meeting, but I did want to address it publicly and make a comment about my concern.
Talk to, you want to answer now? Okay.
Uh, I have, uh, Mister Donovan's probably seen some emails I've sent, they may, maybe had a sharper, um, edge on them that I intended them to be, but I do have, again, I, I believe in my, my civic duty to look out for my community, you know, it's hard, you guys, what you do, it's a tough job, because you gotta stand up here and represent your constituents and, and try to do what's best for Stanley County. I think citizens also, many citizens have, have taken upon themselves to volunteer for things and, and to show their interest, so um, it's funny, there's a lot of people in Stanley County that are unaware of the CTP, and they're unaware of the planning that's going on right now. Some people, I was talking to the other day, had, uh, had no idea whatsoever, and, um, you know, we've, we've seen indications of surveys that were done, uh, public sentiment surveys that were done, that many people didn't really have the opportunity to participate in, so uh, again, my goal would be to, to help provide better communication to the public. Again, I, you know, I'm biased, I have a position about, um, about, uh, where the road might go if it were to be built. I also believe in responsible economic development in Locust. While I know Mister Chairman, there's people in Alamo that are trying to get to, to Charlotte, that's a concern. But, um, you know, Locust is a growing community, and it's, it's a viable economic center in Stanley County that could help, help this county grow in, in a responsible way, so again, tonight my request is, I'd like to serve in, as an advisory capacity, as a volunteer to assist with that, again, not to, you know, please don't take my harsh emails, I've just, I try to look at the facts, you know, what are we, what are we looking at? Are we looking at, you know, statistical models that prove that we need to do this, are there census, is there census data that says we need to build this bypass road, let, let's be responsible about how we use taxpayers' money, and how we use resources for the county and the state.
I'm, I'm new at the, uh, chairmanship of the RPO, I'll, I'll tell you that, but my understa- and secondly, I would first, first of all, say just thank you so much for your willingness to serve. Um, and I agree with you, there are a lot of people in Stanley County who could be more informed, and, and we, we would like for them to be more informed, and be willing to step up and be on committees, and, and, and serve in any capacity that's available. Uh, and I think even as Commissioner Ashudo has said a couple of meetings ago, even to file and run for office, which is open between now and, and February the twenty-eighth, so we do appreciate citizens stepping forward. As a new person on the RPO, I'm not aware of any formal, uh, advisory positions that, um, that, um, your requests would fit into. I am aware along with Commissioner Morton, uh, when we attended the meeting that was held in Locust in January to talk about the Comprehensive Transportation Plan for Western Stanley County, that they did, um, uh, offer the elected officials from Red Cross, Stanfield, Locust, and Stanley County the opportunity to speak, and then they did offer opportunities for citizens who were there to also speak. Um, and we are aware that there will be, uh, public hearings on whatever choice the North Carolina DOT puts forward for any type of, um, uh, alignment that they, that, that may be suggested. So, thank you so much for your willingness to be involved, and, uh, I don't take, uh, your passion, um, uh, in any negative way, uh, concerning the, the emails that you've sent, I understand it and, and appreciate it, and, uh, we'll certainly look to be sure to keep you and all other citizens informed of, uh, this process as it moves forward. But I'll certainly stay in touch with you, especially because you've, uh, made the effort tonight.
Thank you, Mister Donovan, thank you.
I'm gonna start backwards tonight, I'm gonna start over here with Commissioner Ashudo.
Hey, just, um, one, one real quick thing, I just appreciate the county employees that are getting back to work today, I know they got a big workload catching up, and I appreciate everything, what they did over the last five days when they had the storm coming through, and just want to, um, talk, give people an update on, and I encourage people to go on the Stanley County Emergency Management Service Facebook page, we have over a thousand seventy people on it. And I know when, when they posted, the two things they posted to get the word out about the storm, the first thing they posted, they had sixty-six shares, and they had twenty-nine hundred people view it, and then to alleviate the calls from the nine-one-one service center, you know, they, they sent out information on the, please don't, a nice way, please don't call nine-one-one if your power is out, here's the phone numbers to call for Duke Energy, et cetera, et cetera. And that had, I believe, was eighty shares and thirty-two hundred people viewed that page, that's a good way, so I'm just still, still trying to encourage people to like that Facebook page, 'cause I tell you what, I know with me, a lot of times I'll get the, that, that's a local weather report I'll get before I get anything from the, you know, the Charlotte media or anything like that, 'cause I just don't really, you know, go to look at that sometimes, but sometimes that stuff pops up on Facebook, but thanks for Andy and the staff and what everybody did over the thing, and also making the good call, I know the people didn't work, but man, sa- employee safety is a big thing. You know, you just hate hearing these stories about employees showing up for work and walking across the parking lot that has ice on it and just, just injuring themselves, so. I'm glad it's drying out now.
Yeah, I, I just echo, I think anytime we have any kind of, um, superstorm or something like that, it really does point to the fact that our, our, our employees do a terrific job, and, uh, they certainly have done a good job. Andy, I know that you've worked hard with the Command Center and other, other things, so, uh, please pass along our gratitude to all employees. Um, I would like to mention that, um, the Comprehensive Transportation Plan meeting, um, uh, that was scheduled for today, that we talked about at our last meeting where we chose a particular route, had to be postponed due to some illness of the DOT staff, and I think maybe related to, uh, some of the, the things that happened last week, the storm, and they couldn't, couldn't get some of the materials put together. Um, I do not know yet when that will be rescheduled, but certainly I'd like to keep you informed, and, uh, we'll try to get that publicized so the citizens in Stanley County will, will know of it as well. And then we'll continue to move toward, uh, the public hearing that we have spoken about ourselves, and that Mister Bennett, uh, has raised tonight as well.
Mister Morton?
No comment tonight.
Mister Bennett, I would again like to re, uh, say the same thing that Lindsey did, or Vice Chairman Donovan, appreciate your involvement and your concern, and we need more citizens like you, and, uh, to get out, and we do, uh, the state does a, they, leads a little better job maybe getting it out to the public, they've had several public hearings, it just announced in the paper, but I, I don't, I was past member of the Board of Transportation, sometimes it's not the best that some of those people do it before us, but, uh, all the numbers are based on traffic count and intersections now, but thank you again for willing to get involved. Mister Manager?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Mister Attorney?
No comment, sir, thank you.
Well, again, thank everyone for coming tonight, and I will entertain a motion to recess, recess this meeting until Friday, February the twenty-first at nine AM at the Stanley County Airport Conference Room for the Board's Annual Planning Retreat. We're going a long way out of town. But, motion made by Vice Chairman Donovan for approval, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Ashudo, all in favor say aye? We're recessed until Friday, next regular meeting is scheduled Monday, March the third.